Seven months, so it isn't like it's been a long period of time.
I kept the C board for.
Yeah. Sorry, it's like. And I know they had two open positions and that one was open for quite a while, so.
Yeah.
I'm sure there wasn't a lot of people beating down the door to get back in, so.
Thank you for coming.
I think qualification wise, I mean, you've been there, you've done it for so long, you're familiar with all the buildings in Cold Spring.
Yeah.
Probably more than most of us.
My knowledge is more. Not full knowledge is part of my knowledge.
Good.
Probably seen many ins- more insides of some of the buildings and.
I've worked in most of that.
And I think that you already visited with your former colleagues and chatted with them a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, I've talked to Al, Kathy, Carolyn.
And and Kathy even, yeah, they I think they they made a recommendation to the village board that we take you seriously as a candidate and appoint you, so.
They're all homeboys.
That's uh, that's good for me, you know, the fact that they want you back.
Mind if I just read what you sent us?
Uh, well, I didn't really actually write that, so.
A ghost could write up this.
I was I was told I had to have a letter written because you guys were taking things in a day, so the secretary wrote that, so.
Yes.
That is a signature.
Yeah, I signed it. I had to get it in, I had like an hour and I was working, so.
You're you're secretary, or?
No, I'm secretary.
She's got to know how to handle it.
Oh, okay.
You know, she wants to go down with it, I guess.
She does represent you very well if you've had the opportunity to.
Yes.
Yeah, I wrote it quick. Like you said, I had like, I was told I had like two hours to write a letter, so. And I was in the middle of doing something, so.
You said sure.
I said, make me look good.
Could you read it for the public?
Absolutely. Uh, hoping village board, I would like to submit my name for the position on the historic architectural review board. As you know, I have eight years prior experience on the board and have worked alongside all the existing members. I have a great interest in what is best for Cold Spring and its historical background. I understand the commitment to time required for meetings, visits and conversations involved with the position. I have knowledge of Colting's policies, guidelines, needs, challenges and strengths. I believe that can be a great asset in addressing these needs, challenges and policies. Public already knows that I am trustworthy, honest and have their needs and issues in mind. If I should be chosen, I will be honored to work on the board with the present members and be a team player. Believe that I would only add to the board's expertise. Thank you for your considerations, Matt.
Good secretary.
She did a good job, Pete.
We should be proud.
Give her a raise.
You have any other questions for us?
No, I know what's involved.
Eight years, yeah, you know more probably, uh, no better than I. Anything else? Somebody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll let you guys, you're on a boost. Have a good night.
Good night, Peter.
He's open, you can stay. We have three minutes. I don't want anyone to miss. Just give me a little cup of water.
Do I have it?
It's like habit.
I think that's close enough. Okay, uh, next is Christina Ball.
Hi, I brought copies of my.
The ball or balls?
It's ball, B O L. Weird Dutch names.
There you go.
Thank you. Oh, you got it, okay.
Thank you for coming to see us.
Thanks for coming.
It's my pleasure to be here, thank you very much.
I'll start. Uh, to whom it may concern, I'm a Carson School of Design graduate, interior expert. That's a big word.
Experiential.
Experienceful design and familiar with architectural plans and elevations. I may have a good sense of the process that the board undertakes to collaborate with residents who appear before the H D R B. I've valued Historic District and have familiarized myself with H D R B guidelines, so please consider me as a member. I will do everything I can to assist the board in its functions. Sincerely, Dana Ball.
What is experiential interior design?
Um, experiential is more, it's almost what, it's an immersive environment, so we take a lot of times what you actually see in the two D space and you do it in a three D environment that people would um walk through. And so they get stimulated sort of from all senses. And I think the reason that it's sort of this up and coming field is because, you know, we're bombarded so much with visual imagery everywhere. And I think that immersive has sort of um developed out of trying to really reach people. And so if you sort of immerse somebody in it, um, it's a way to reach them in a more profound way, essentially. But we had to use plans and elevations. It wasn't just all sort of, you know, abstract conceptual design.
So why do you want to be on the H D R B?
Well, I care very much about the Historical District here. I recently have moved to this village and I find it incredibly charming. And there's so many aspects, I think, of this small town feel and the historical element that we have here. I'm very interested in preserving. I think the other thing is, is that I'm really interested in helping people through the process. I mean, I sit in an edit room all day with a lot of different opinions thrown at me and we really have to sort of move the ball down the field. And so in a way, I feel like that skill set of being able to hear a lot of different opinions, but you know, and sort of modulate what needs to happen. Um, I think it's a good skill that I actually possess and I'd like to sort of help the board with that and dedicate my time to that. And I also think with this economy, it's really important to work with people, you know, in terms of their budgets. And how we can get sort of the best results possible with the people who maybe can't spend a lot of money. And I think it's very important to have that in um our minds as we're working with people, you know, that it's, that's a real key, I think. Um, and it's something that I'm interested in. And I think finally, the last thing that I have to offer is I own a license to AutoCAD and also three D Studio Max. And so when we're updating these standards, I can draw and also extrude. And so I could, you know, help update the drawings, which are beautiful. They're these beautiful hand drawn um in the old code. But just in terms of modernizing and moving forward, I could, I could be helpful with that. And I know there's a lot of work to do with that. And I'd be happy to sort of donate my services and my software for that purpose.
That actually answers my question. I'm just wondering if you were aware that we're, you know, we're looking to update the Historic District code and the guidelines. I'm wondering if you feel the given the time and the interest to really go into that, because it's a it's an all volunteer project.
It's a big rock, yes. I would love to, actually. It's something that I, I I love to draw, I actually have, and I love to work in Mac. So I think, I feel like it's a really nice opportunity for me because I ended up going back to my old business. I didn't end up, you know, working in design. So this would be a way for me to use those skills. It would be nice for me to happen to do it.
What's your, what's your thoughts on the, you know, we've been working, H D R B and worked for, are more three years on the go. Have someone that's interested in putting money towards themselves. You notice that they, uh, one of those things the village board was trying to, at one point, do ourselves, but the expensive is something that was overwhelming. What's your thoughts on the fact that we've had it out for bid, or out for proposal for purchase and we only have gotten one or one each time? Right now, we have one person that, I'm not sure if you're familiar with the plans that they're.
I haven't seen them. I'm sorry. I haven't seen them. I I can't speak to that. I.
No, that's fine. I just, because it's just, it's a historic building, one of the oldest buildings in the village. And uh, just thought I'd.
Yeah.
Ask that question, but what are your thoughts for?
I haven't seen any of the plans, so I would, I would feel more comfortable answering that question if I had had a chance to look at the plans.
Actually, I don't, I don't think there are any plans, but you say it right, it's just his proposals.
A proposal.
Okay, I haven't seen, okay.
It's just a written summary.
A proposal of what he plans on doing, but the fact that he has to maintain that the character that we have as far as being an historic, historic piece of our village and the growth. What about Butterfield? What's your thoughts on Butterfield?
Listen, I I think it's inevitable. We know it's all coming and we're gonna, we need to deal with it. And I am really, I I just want to make sure that we get the best Butterfield possible. That's really where I am. And I understand that it's been a huge bone of contention, but listen, it's happening. And so, and I think everybody feels like we just want to do the best that we possibly can. And that's really where I'm at. And I'm willing to work with everybody on this. So I think it's a great question and I know that it's been batted around a lot. And I'm just, I'm really ready to kind of roll up my sleeves and help work with it and and get us to where we need to be. So that's, that's my feeling on it.
Thanks.
Yeah.
In that same vein, what were your thoughts on the process to knock Butterfield down or demolish Butterfield? Uh, that was one of the questions that I was asked when I joined the H D R B was, is it a historic building or is it?
Well, I think that's, I think it's a very interesting question. I mean, is there a waiting?
Is there no right or wrong?
Yeah, no, I I understand, but I guess, you know, in some ways, um, I think if you were to try to salvage it and then also build anew, in some ways, that might be more problematic than actually starting again. So I think you need to look at sort of the efficacy of, you know, salvaging something. I, that, that's my sense.
Did you live in the village during that, that discussion? That was the end of two thousand twelve, so.
No. I just moved here in July, after I fell in love.
I moved here after falling in love.
Yeah, it's very easy to do. It's a really wonderful place in a lot of different ways.
Okay, one more. How do you feel about blending modern architecture into a historic village?
Okay, I studied like the Louvre and, you know, the J P, uh, sorry, J P Morgan Library. And there are, I think, ways to do it that are incredibly beautiful. I think you have to be very cautious in um a town like this. You know, you don't, modernity in a way has to be fitting and there has to be a purpose to it, not just because we want to modernize. So I think if there are um green materials being used in a way that there, it's going to become very cost effective in terms of heating and all of that, then, you know, I think that's when you start to look at it, not just for design sake. But if there's some real cost savings and in terms of materiality and all of that, I think it's a great idea. So, but again, it has to be case by case. And I don't, I I also don't know that you can actually um sort of universally give um an idea about that. I think it's going to be case by case and that's why we have these boards, so that we can really review them.
That's one of the issues that we really kind of, you know, get conflicted with is how do you feel about use of modern alternative materials on historic buildings?
I think if they are disguised in a way, and I think if there, if there's no difference in sort of the way they look as a surface, then I think it's absolutely important to do, especially with where we are in our environment. I mean, I just think we have to do it really as responsible citizens.
So the, the um, materials that are available, traditional materials that are available now do not, are are not of the same quality.
Anyway.
So, um, it's, it's important, but I think that that's something that Historic District Review Board has, you know, looked at and considered in the past and has felt sort of frustrated by some limitations, but.
Right.
I I think that's a big part of, of of the code rewrite i- is things like that. And um, you, you know, we, we've kind of tied our hand by going so long without rewriting. And like now that time's just, just, just right or, or, you know, it's just time to do it. And, you know, things like that are going to be a big, are going to be a big deal in their rewrite.
Excuse me, it's based for problems.
So it's important to, um, understand where we're coming from with that because, you know, it's, their board, I mean, if you look at the, the problems that their board has had in the past, especially microscopically in the last few years, it's been because of, of the, you know, the age of the code and, and what we're trying to do. And then, you know, there ends up being friction between um that board, our board, residents and, and, you know, one of the code rewrites can, we're assuming and hoping it's gonna really um start anew and and make life easy for everybody.
Yeah. I think that's a great idea. I do, and I think it's definitely something I need to look at, absolutely.
You have any other questions for us?
No.
Any other questions?
I'm good.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
So are those the two applicants good enough?
Uh, I believe we do have two more.
Take my.
And Doris.
That's all.
Excuse me.
Who are the, uh, who are the other applicants and, uh, do we have their material?
I don't, I don't have the materials.
Who are they?
Oh, Michael T. Julius, um, and Pam Colangelo.
So Pam Colangelo wants to return to the H D R B?
Correct.
Are we going to, you said we're going to discuss this immediately?
Yeah, no, yeah, there's, there's no time. We didn't specify three thirty, seven thirty, but. Again, didn't change, it's what time. An open session.
So when, when are we thinking that we'll get to interview Pam Colangelo and Mike T. Julius?
Um, as soon as we can. I just, I know they're, they're in a, you know, H D R B is in a timeframe with their, uh, you need to fill the seats.
Well, they. Yeah, sure. So do we think that we'll have that, we'll do that next Tuesday if they express availability?
Do you have any more readings or?
Next, on the thirtieth.
Did Mary get the legal letters redone? Yeah, we're going to have a real meeting, but just a workshop on the thirtieth. I'm replying.
May I, may I ask a question? Are we now, so, so we interviewed Dana and another candidate in the history. We didn't feel the need to interview Peter because we all knew him. Are you going to be asking the board to interview initially and make recommendations as has been standard practice? Or are you now taking over the interview process?
Well, I mean, we're definitely, we're taking over the interview process, but we don't want to not um get your feelings. Um, you know, the process is get everybody's feeling and then, then make a decision. Um, you know, it's, it's just.
I mean, we're willing, we are willing to do that.
Sure.
And we think it's really important to do that because board dynamics are very important and we have very serious work ahead of us for the next year. It's very important that we get the right skill sets at the table and that we get the right temperaments at the table to make the, to make the goals happen.
Absolutely.
Um, so if you are asking us to meet with people, we will make the time to do it.
Uh, yeah, well, we're gonna meet with them and then, and get you, and then, and I'll, I'll, I'm asking for, you know, your opinion to candidates and, um, you know, the board as a whole. I just want to speak that out and then I'll make the decision.
So, so are you, I'm confused. Are you asking us to interview first or you are?
Oh, well, we're gonna interview them and then, yeah, first, correct. And then we'll, we'll be in touch with you guys.
To ask us to then meet with them again?
If you want to meet with them, it's up to you, yeah.
We're just concerned that not drag on for another minute, because we have bare quorum.
Absolutely.
Has anyone done their street tip?
What?
Has anyone done their surveying?
I need to get yours.
I have my plans. I'll have to get back to you.
Thank you.
I'll leave you in the mailbox down here. And that's the, that's the, right away.
Great, thank you.
Any luck with, uh, the silver spoon though?
Um, Carolyn and I are going tomorrow. So is it okay to answer?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so I think it's really important to acknowledge while there is public in the room that, that the owner of the silver spoon has been really cooperative and really willing to go a long way to, it's not a restoration of the, of the facade, the windows have been changed and the original cornice is gone. That he's willing to work with us to, to come to an approximation of the original facade and he's been super helpful to me. Carolyn and I are going tomorrow to do some research at the Historical Museum, at the Historic Museum, to see if we can turn out some photographs to work from to help him approximate the original cornice and the window hoods.
Sandy, you remember what Colleen's was?
It's great. I'm sorry.
Do you remember what Colleen's was back in the?
Way back when?
Yeah.
Do you remember Board Book on the outside?
No, it was the name.
That was the old bar?
It was Colleen, wasn't it?
George Colleen's?
No, that was Giametta's. That was, that was Colleen was after Giametta.
Yeah, no, so Giametta's is an earlier than Colleen's.
Yeah.
So it's been a bar a long time, just to be honest.
Yes, yes.
Because she was written for names.
It used to, it used to be a pool hall, owned by Johnny Rosario.
How do you, how do you spell the name?
R I C E B U T O.
That's.
R I C E B U T O, that's not pool hall. And what was the other bar name?
Um, Giametta's.
Gi, G I A M E T D.
G, oh.
Oh, Janapoe?
Yes, Giametta.
Like Jama T.
And that was George and D. Thank you. And then Colleen's like C O L E.
K I L.
K I L. I remember that one.
You do? Is it that recent that you remember?
I remember when I was.
It's, I've been here nineteen years.
That's pretty recent. I called first, I called first.
I don't.
I like to tell the story that the house I lived in was Stephanie.
The house you lived in what?
I moved into the house that Stephanie calls.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
The first, first person I met.
Small place.
Yeah, I, um, I took my parents in there when I first went to, for breakfast and they had the Powerball. I won forty-three dollars and paid for breakfast.
Well done.
Okay.
That looks beautiful, yeah. I hope I knew, you know, we did a lot of stuff.
We'll start with the, for rest of the agenda for the trustee's meeting, April twenty-second, twenty fourteen. Um, final budget adoption. Which is resolution fifteen dash twenty fourteen. Resolution adopting general fund, general fund budget for the fiscal year commencing on June first, twenty fourteen, ending May thirty-first, twenty fifteen. Making appropriations for the conduct of the village of Cold Spring Government and establishing the rates of compensation for officers and employees for such period. Whereas this board has met the time and place specified in notice of public hearing, an tentative budget and heard all persons desiring to be heard therein. Now therefore be resolved that the tentative budget as amended and revised and herein set forth, hereafter set forth is hereby adopted in that the several amounts stated in the column titled tentative in the tentative budget but hereafter referred to as adopted in schedule A one and A two are hereby appropriated for the objects and purposes specified. The salaries and wages stated in the salary schedule of the tentative budget shall be in, and are hereby fixed at amounts shown therein effective Tuesday, April twenty-second, twenty fourteen. Further be resolved that the tentative fireman's service award tax levy as amended and revised and, and as herein set forth is hereby adopted and the amounts stated are hereby appropriated for the object and purpose specified and are hereby fixed at the amount shown herein effective Tuesday, April twenty-second, twenty fourteen.
So moved?
Same.
If I was to make a public hearing.
Yes.
Campbell?
I'm sure.
Yes. O'Callaghan, Trustee Hawkins?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Bowman?
Yes.
Trustee Fatty?
Yes.
Um, may I? Resolution officially adopted April twenty second.
Twenty-two, twenty-second.
Next, resolution sixteen of twenty fourteen. A resolution adopting a water fund budget for the fiscal year commencing on June first, twenty fourteen and ending May thirty-first, twenty fifteen, making appropriations for the conduct of the village of Cold Spring Government and establishing the rates of compensation for officers, employees for such period. Whereas this board has met the time and place specified in the notice of public hearing and attempted water budget and heard all persons desiring to be heard therein. Now therefore be resolved that the tentative water fund budget as amended and revised and as here and after set forth is hereby adopted and that the several amounts stated in the column titled tentative in the tentative water fund budget but hereafter referred to as adopted in schedule F one are hereby appropriated for the objects and purposes specified and the salaries and wages stated in the salary schedule, the tentative water budget shall be and are hereby fixed at the amounts shown therein effective Tuesday, April twenty-second, twenty fourteen.
So moved?
Same.
Uh, Trustee Hawkins?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Bowman?
Yes.
Trustee Fatty?
Yes.
And I? Resolution officially adopted April twenty-second, twenty fourteen. Last one is resolution seventeen, twenty fourteen. A resolution adopting sewer fund budget for the fiscal year commencing on June first, twenty fourteen and ending May thirty-first, twenty fifteen. Making appropriations for the conduct of the village of Cold Spring Government and establishing the rates and compensation for officers and employees for such period. Whereas this board has met at the time and place specified in the notice of public hearing on the tentative sewer fund budget and sewer fund rate increase, nine dollars per unit, per quarter and heard all persons desiring to be heard therein. Now therefore be resolved that the tentative sewer fund budget as amended and revised and as hereafter set forth is hereby adopted and that several amounts stated in the column titled tentative in the tentative sewer fund budget but hereafter referred to as adopted in schedule G one are hereby appropriated for the objects and purposes specified and the salaries and wages stated in the salary schedule and that the sewer budget shall be and are hereby fixed at the amount shown therein effective Tuesday, April twenty-second, twenty fourteen. Now therefore be further resolved, the sewer quarterly flat rate unit fee is hereby increased by now of nine dollars per unit, per quarter from sixty-nine thirty per unit to seventy-eight thirty per unit, per quarter effective seven fifteen, twenty fourteen. It's in motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote. Trustee Hawkins?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Bowman?
Yes.
Trustee Fatty?
Yes.
And I? Resolution officially adopted, April twenty-second, twenty fourteen. Respondents. Central Hudson Energy Group. Uh, Dear Mayor Fallow, Governor Cuomo established a commission under the Mooreland Act to examine utility preparation in response to major storms. As a result of the commission's finding, Central Hudson invites you and your, you or your designated and up to two additional members of your organization to a meeting to review and discuss our pre-storm preparations and guidelines for addressing potential flooding. Our objective, our objective is to improve communication in the line where possible, mutual interest and efficient use of resources. In order to prepare for our meeting, please confirm your attendance and number of attendees by responding to floodplan@centralhut, sendhut.com. Meeting will held Tuesday, April twenty-ninth. Um, I have to work that day. So anybody that is, uh, wishing to attend? Please marry. Mention that. State of New York, Department of Transportation, regarding high-speed rail Empire Corridor Program Tier One Draft Environmental Impact Statement. Pennsylvania's Pennsylvania Station, New York City to Niagara Falls Station, Niagara Falls, New York. Uh, this is comment period has been extend, extended. Dear Mayor Fallow, we are writing to notify you that a comment period for Tier One Draft Environmental Impact Statement for the high-speed rail Empire Corridor Program has been extended. The Tier One Draft E I S continues to be available at W W W dot dots, oh, dot T O T, dot N Y dot gov, dot slash Empire dash corridor. Comments on our post program are important to us. Please forward your comments to us by Wednesday, April thirtieth. Written comments on the project and draft E I S may be submitted to David Chan, Project Manager, High-Speed Rail Empire Corridor Program, New York State Department of Transportation, Fifty Wolf Road, P O D, number six one, Olden, New York. Email comments may be sent to empirecorridor@dot. Email comments may be sent to empirecorridor at dot D O T dot N Y dot gov. Comments may also be submitted online at the project website, W W W dot D O T dot N Y dot gov backslash empires um dash corridor. Further information on program may be obtained and copies can be requested from David Chan, Project Manager. So anybody wants to comment on high-speed rail from New York City to Niagara Falls?
Can we um, can we post this, you know, through news announcements to residents who live on the high-speed rail corridor?
Sure. This is from.
Trustee Bruskin?
Yeah.
This is from Debbie Miller?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just a follow-up on the holiday lighting committee. She, she uh, put together. Seven people and there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
Is um, is Vivian not wanting to participate in this?
Vivian is here.
There are.
Vivian is here, but just she's one that sent a separate letter in and I think she was speaking with Debbie Miller as well.
Yeah, it's both.
There are seven on here. Um, I thought it was going to be lighting and lighting, so.
I suppose just something, right?
Right.
Yeah, uh, we have to, we'll get with Debbie and um, I don't know if they want, if these people want to do all lighting or just holiday. They want to be just holidayed and um, you know, maybe they can set up a subcommittee for the holiday part to the committee of all lighting, uh, we'll, we'll talk.
Yeah, I wrote that up with Debbie, she, she, I don't know if she discussed that with all these folks, but uh.
Okay.
But the other, only addition to that list that you have is uh.
I think I have one.
Billy Hagan is here tonight.
Yeah, we may, we may have had a couple others also.
Allison's here, she's able to speak to it.
The, the uh, yeah, the, the holiday lighting committee is really dedicated to holiday lights. Yeah, so I think what we can do is that could be a s- subcommittee of that, of the all the lighting to help handle with the, the holiday part, cause I think that's gonna be actual work.
Yes.
Assuming that that might be actual work.
But they're gonna start working on the, right away, because we're in, it'll be here.
Right.
So we'll have a plan together by uh. Pretty good.
So were we able to answer Debbie's question?
Um.
Does she need to wait?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, she has.
Well, the license has been got, your guidelines that they have to follow.
Right.
Right.
I didn't have the answer for them, but we were discussing that before as far as Central Hudson, or where, how they plan on doing what they plan to do this year.
Right.
How I can say, I'm just seeing how the bikes that are on hold, or coming off of buildings, so.
We don't want to come off the building.
That's what it really be able to do.
Yeah, we'll get the, the, the complete lighting committee.
Yeah.
Set, so we can start working and then we can work together with that.
Yeah.
So yeah.
So are we, how are we assembling the complete whole lighting committee if these people are just doing holiday, are we putting out?
It was just Vivian and I.
It's one.
It was just Vivian and I, that, they were the only, we were, she was the only person who volunteered.
Yeah, I think one or two more may have come in this week.
Okay.
Yeah, but um.
Right, I, I, this, this is about holiday lighting, so I'm interested, and you said that you want to be a comprehensive sort of holiday and street lighting and so. Are we putting out another request to people to take care of the non-holiday lighting?
Um.
Or are we?
Yeah, I don't think.
That's what did go out and Vivian responded to.
Yeah. Yeah, Mary, Mary out of it.
Good.
Yep, mhm.
And then now apparently we have some people to be.
Vivian responded to the holiday lighting. Many moved in.
Yeah, I know.
So did Mary just send out?
I'll, I'll, I had, I had asked her to put out, I'll, I'll verify once she.
A new one?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I don't see it.
It was through the website, I don't know if it.
Let me check.
The Wester, the picture.
Thank you. Yes, uh, let us hit for correspondence, um. Which, um, who should do that, we can do it on our old business.
The um, the, I think, I don't know if everybody else, if, oh no, it wasn't part of package, it was in my mailbox from my X nine.
Letter from Greg.
No, the letter from Pete Sanders. I could get a copy of the same letter in my mailbox, I don't know, so I assumed, oh, it must be part of package.
Uh.
Nothing.
Old business, um, I wanted to talk about the. Just wanted to. For the. Tank at the Grove, um. You know, that's one of the, the, the hangups with our, uh, with the, with the proposal. I, I guess my question for the board is, um. Do we feel it's better to just take care of the underground tank or at least investigate? Um, it is, it is a non-starter for, uh, stated in the RFP, um. Do we want to go ahead and start? Do the initial investigation into the shape of the tank or, um. Let it be a non-starter for the, the current RFP for the Grove?
How, how did we leave this last time, I thought we, we talked about the crisis, the quotes for the soil tests and for abandoning the tank.
Yes, we just, we didn't make a decision.
And why didn't we not make a decision? That, yeah, this is.
But we were talking about how much it was.
Thought we were moving ahead with having our guys, um. Take up.
Hold it.
The, take up the equipment that was left and we were gonna pay.
That was one of the options.
Right, one of the options.
That was the cost-effective option was to have our guys.
Cost of, right, uh, so we will do the investigation, it's fifteen hundred dollars.
Do you, uh, does that cover our package?
To remove the tank, no.
Can you, can, I, I didn't bring any of the stuff from the last package, so.
Excuse me, anybody pressure test the tank?
No.
Not I.
No. Fifteen hundred for us to. Have the tank disposed of, if we remove it, um, a dollar eighty-nine per gallon. If there's residual and two hundred and twenty-five dollars. This is a combination of, um, multiple, um, quotes for. Various work, put them all together, these were the, 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 the most, least expensive to go. Uh, what this would be is, um, using Downy oil to dispose of the tank, using Downy oil, um, to pump up the tank at a dollar eighty-nine per gallon. But using, um, our water, base water treatment plant to collect the samples and send to our labs. It'd be two hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Right now I don't remember, did we, did we, didn't we agree that we were gonna get other quotes on a big tank abandonment?
Yes.
I mean, this was, what, what, this was two weeks ago, I.
Yep.
Um.
Yeah, and the Downy was twenty-five hundred, um, there was, like, there was one from P and L, it was, the total package was sixty-five hundred.
From P and L?
Yeah, and uh.
No, we just need a, an oil delivery, but, well, did we, so we, we got a quote from Downy, but we didn't talk to Pedal and we didn't talk to Patini or.
No, these were the ones that, that Mary had contacted and the ones we got back.
Are we a hundred percent sure that it's in that third section by the L? I mean it.
A hundred percent, no. Larry, Larry is a hundred percent sure that he knows where it is, um.
It hasn't been removed.
He is.
Is there a way to process the?
Cause have you found the fill yet?
What we do know is, if you don't mind.
Oh, please.
What we do know is that there's a vent pipe right in that area. And when you're in the cellar, in the utility room with boiler, that mammoth boiler that's still down there. Coming through the wall where vent is located in that area, there is a, a, a line coming in to what would have been the, the burner at that time. So we know, so it makes sense that it's in there, whether it was abandoned, taken out at some part, point in the past, I don't think anybody really knows, but.
So have we decided that we weren't gonna ask the highway department to do some excavating?
No, 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 I, right, I, that's what I would like to do now, is have them.
That was sort of. To sort of proof the site, like, okay.
Prove the site, find the top of the tank.
Okay.
Find it, the, you know, the, uh. How well the top of the tank held up, maybe cut a hole in it and then take it from there.
Speaking to folks I know in business, if it was put in the thirties or forties, which is likely. It's probably, you know, quarter, three-eighths inch thick steel, and there may not be any issues with it at all. My, you know, we've discussed before, my issue is that in case there is a problem, it could be something that, that really just kind of blows the budget for the project. Um, but there is the potential that it's, you know, in an older tank could be very thick steel and there is no problem, we just don't know.
Yeah, and it was based on the soil in that area, you know, we believe it's very, it's, it's very permeous soil, permeous soil, so we're.
It's not like it was sitting in water, we expected.
Right, we're, right, any water that got there, we believe has drained, so.
We're pretty clear on what, like, why it's an issue for you and we're totally sympathetic to that, it's so.
The pipe that you see in the basement connects to the oil burner or?
Not anymore.
Is there any chance it was a, a tank in the basement that's been pulled out and it's just a dead pipe and the fill is what you see on the outside?
Sure.
So yeah, so. They said, we wanna do it, uh, investigative excavate.
Investigative excavation.
Exploratory surgery.
Exploratory surgery.
Well, Greg could pick it up with his metal detector.
Yep, right, Larry's at here, so, um, that's what I, I would like to do, if the board is good at that.
Okay, so we're deciding to, I'm sorry, and so what is it that we're just, we're agreeing or we're saying we're okay, sort of?
Doing the exploratory excavation.
Yes.
Um, checking on the.
Potential location.
The, yeah, the location, the shape that the tank is in.
The location and condition.
And condition and then take it from there, and if we believe that is, um, you know, decent condition, empty.
Mm-hmm.
Then we will remove and take, we can take four separate soil samples and, and send it in one sample, just for two twenty-five. And as long as it comes back positive, then you're good, if it comes back negative, then you'll have to do four separate.
I think that, um, we, we had agreed earlier that we need, we need to undertake this testing, whether it's a property we're.
Uh, correct.
Assigning to someone else or so, I think. So, so, so we're gonna proceed up to the point of testing the soil and we're not abandoning the tank right now? Or are we getting other quotes from other companies that are, for abandonment?
I, I would like to. I mean, yeah, we can get more quality.
How much, how much was the abandonment?
Um, for us, fifteen hundred dollars for, for them to, for them to dispose.
The reason I'm asking is.
It's twenty-five hundred if they excavate and, and, and dispose of.
I just, I, I had a tank abandoned and it didn't cost fifteen, it was under a thousand dollars, so that's why I'm thinking that maybe we should.
Was it the Berry thing?
Yeah.
Really? So what, we'll definitely still do the exploratory and get quotes on the disposal, um. Okay, so we'll, we'll, we're definitely gonna have with that too. The other thing, um, just, I don't know, still in the Grove. Um, the board, our attorney's back tomorrow, so we need some clarification, some of the things that are, that, that we were talking about too. Uh, and you guys have extended the date, thirty days, so, uh, we can get, get to an end point.
Is that something that happens, um, unilaterally, I, I don't have, I don't have the RFP in front of me, sorry. But is that a unilateral thing or is, is that a, to extend the date or is that something that we all have to, like, we mutually agree on or? But I'm trying to remember the wording of the RFP.
The way I worded it was, would be a mutual agreement. And at the last, for the last meeting, I submitted that, on our side at least.
Right.
We were okay with extending for, from those thirty days and see where, where we get at that point. So I guess then you guys would have to decide to do the same if.
Well, they're not fast, um, so.
Two.
Uh, I, I think you'd, you know, um, show good faith if someone's gonna make that motion.
Tell them.
Make a motion for it, second.
Another discussion? Those in favor?
All right.
All right.
Thank you. Um, the. I don't know, I put in every, uh, con, uh, everybody's mailbox, the estimate for the. Audiovisual services for this room in. They were, you saw page number ones, uh, two hundred and fifty dollars or two seventy, and that basically that's a installation of a new color monitor. And extend to an analog video cable from back office to the front office, what that is, is in the courtroom, that, when they got the cameras put in. Um, for, this way the, the camera's shiny in the hallway, as you can see who was walking down the hallways because you can't see who came, who came in the front door. When Mary is out, uh, working, Ellen in the next office doesn't have, uh, direct view of that front door. So I want, I would, I would like to put the mon, a monitor in her office, so if somebody comes in the front door that is not supposed to. Or, uh, a danger to her, she will see it before she gets up and looks, and then she's been spotted. Um, one of, that was the, the, one thing, these are, this is just one estimate, one quote, um, if we like, then, um. I think first, we could probably do some of this work ourselves, I, I believe we can. And we can also, as we should, put out other bids, it's a good, we feel that. So the first page, that's what that is, that is the, uh, adding the additional monitor for Ellen's office, so she can, uh, see who's coming in the door without having to physically get up. And look around the corner. Then the, if you look in the next page, the four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. That is the installation of audio and video recording system to be utilized for town hall meetings. Uh, that includes the Sony audio video recorder, which burns this video directly to DVD, um, up to twelve hours. Uh, one camera, four microphones, two ceiling speakers, amplifier and mixer. And then if you look at the bottom one, video projector system, basically what that was is a permanently mounted system in here with a pull-down screen, so anytime anybody's coming to do a presentation. Uh, they can just plug in and they don't have to use our, they're, they're ready to go.
Is this, um, is this sort of a, a static, uh, setup so that we don't have to have a professional who?
Correct, uh, correct, this way this room will be permanently for any and all meetings and whatever the policy is for what meetings will be videotaped. It can be done for anything that happens in this room. Uh, four speakers are three for the diets and one for, for the public to, to speak of. And the line item budget's four thousand, so at forty-nine fifty, basically it would be, you know, we, that four thousand is there, it will now save us. And going forward, the only issue, potential issue, is anytime we feel we have a large meeting that we have to go elsewhere, then we would have to, um, a backup plan, is what I think we could probably. Get someone to help us out.
When you say backup plan, you mean hire a professional?
Hire a professional to do the meeting, so.
Okay.
That's a negative, obviously, but, I mean, the room isn't large enough to do that, so. Um, we, we don't need to act on this, basically this is just, this is where we're at with that, to discuss it, and then we can, I think there's a ways where we could probably. Get other bids or, uh, you know, maybe do some of the work ourselves or.
So, so this is sixty-one hundred dollars, all told, for the installation and then including the video projector, or are we not hearing the video?
Right, and again, you know, it's a two-piece system, I think, you know, the goal is probably to do the audio, video and then, you know, probably try to get somebody to donate or find a, another way to, to do the, uh. Audio video projector, it's just, uh, a baseline, so we know what we're looking at and planning.
And you can stage it so you can do one in one way?
Yeah, he, the way they're, yeah, they're.
Or so, and he's doing it all at the same time?
Uh, it doesn't appear that way, if, I'm sure if we asked him as a package, you, you know, maybe you, because if each one has its individual, uh, breakout, so if we wanted to do a package, they may be able to.
When we currently record meetings, what are we getting at the end of the night, just a raw recording, the no, you know, intro or processing done to it? That was my other question, is whether.
I believe it is.
Whether she's putting the introduction and stuff, editing it into the video and doing the transitions and things like that.
I've never watched one, I don't.
When it comes on the television screen, it has.
When it comes on the television screen, it has what the meeting is, what for example village.
But is she doing that here or is the TV station doing that?
I don't know what's done, but it does come up on the screen on the right in the very beginning.
Yeah.
And then it flashes periodically throughout the transmission, but I don't know what it's done.
Yeah, she delivers the the disc to Mary who delivers it to.
When did she get it to Mary though, is it that night or is it the next day?
No.
It's not that night.
That's another a question I wanted to ask her.
Yeah, so basically we can now, you know, come up with um questions and directions, this this is just basically a baseline for us to see, see what we're looking at, so. You know, we don't need to act on anything, just your thoughts.
Can we go back to the Grove? I'm sorry, Steve London, but I just wanted to ask you, um have you reached out to the assessor about uh to get to to talk to us about the abatement and give us his sort of professional?
Steve was working on that, so I.
But he the question, I know Steve was gonna talk to him about his sort of relationship with the taxes, but.
Right.
Before we ask the town to actually undertake undertake this this uh law.
Enter into. Right.
That we were gonna get a little more information about that and find out from the tax assessors what that what the impact that was and what his opinion on that was.
I did not, um.
Michael Borish suggested that.
Listen to your mother. Listen to your mother, cause I agree with your mother.
Um I did not, I mean, would is that would you be able to do that for me?
Yeah.
Thank you. You know, why don't you do it? It's not my duty, it's okay. Might as well be, right?
I work for Mary.
Good answer, um so I would appreciate that, alright, I mean, I submit that.
Yeah, I I follow, yeah.
Getting back to the videotaping.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
I think it's a great step in the right direction, but it's definitely worthwhile getting other.
No, absolutely, yeah, basically this is what the the premise behind this is our IT guy uses this company. And I had asked our our IT guy for the quote, so we kind of knew where we stood, so uh and you know, our IT guy has no control over this.
I'd. I'd also want, you know, specifications of equipment and stuff, because I mean, that's actually cheap for a a video projector system, so I don't know what what.
Absolutely. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, and you know what, I'll put you in touch with with them if you want.
Alright.
Yeah, could you, one other thing to ask, um when Ralph was talking about where the microphones are, they're at the dais.
Mm-hmm.
One of the things that I think our board in particular has made great strides with is sitting at the tables, that people don't feel like they're the tribunal. And being able to sit cooperatively with people and look at plans at this table, so if the recording were flexible enough to be either at the diet the dais or at the table, that would be great.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it you, I I'm not sure they spoke about wireless, but I don't think, I doubt that they they um put in a the bid the quote for wireless.
Um how about that is you've got a bad reason, right?
Yeah, so what they did is it's probably hardwired, so I'm just probably, there's one for, you know, there's an extra one, so we could.
Move that one, possibly.
Move that one or make sure that there's enough wire for these that at least one of them can be moved, so there's one for you, one for the public, so yeah, we'll absolutely put that in.
Also, they're in the ceiling too, yeah, I'm scared that.
Do do a lot of drop ones, I think what happens is I in in you know, in my conversation with Tim, it's we're broke, we're broke, we're broke, so.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
You know, I think what they did is they 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 bid the the least expensive, yeah.
Okay.
So I mean, these are definitely things that we can ask and you know, maybe we can get, you know.
If you're gonna have, no matter what, you're gonna have wires, I mean, if you're gonna have a a projector coming from the ceiling, you're gonna have all kinds of, you know, do something like take all those connectors, you're gonna have to go someplace.
Well, all the. Well, all of it was is uh is is hardwired and hidden.
Yeah.
You know, which is a lot of, a lot of that's probably later.
But you're gonna, so when someone brings a laptop.
Yeah.
They're gonna wanna plug in somewhere, but they are shitty, that's.
Yeah, we're, I mean, the plan is is to put a mounting um receptacle on that wall, so you just, you know, just short cord to plug into anything, yeah, so I mean, it's.
Yeah. Scraping.
Other companies all wired for it, but I mean, out outside the company, I don't think the comp planner or anyone's used it.
The last.
Used it for the uh waterfront.
Yeah, dockside. Mm-hmm, okay. Worthwhile. Okay. Bruce, you wanna do, you wanna speak about this uh Red Rum event?
What change you mean?
Yeah, no, we, as you know, we talked about this at our last meeting and came down to the cost. Ellen basically figured that cost, ten police officers, ten of our thirteen police officers, George says he needs. He was concerned about the cost of it for one, because he looked, his budget is only what it is every year, and the number of events throughout the year to record, there's not the same amount of officers, but additional officers, but the cost is gonna be around two thousand dollars. Just for the uh that um Red Rum event.
Can.
He also had notes at the end of it, said that field thirteen officers now, limited availability, the officer will be very difficult to venture, but that's thirteen coping officers, so many trip, same troopers, so many chefs.
I'm sorry, he's he's saying he needs thirteen officers?
Ten, ten of our officers.
Oh.
At cost of two thousand dollars.
Right. Can we talk a little bit about why we need ten police officers at this event? Last year, we only need apparently needed six and it cost us over fifteen hundred dollars. And nothing happened at the event and the reason that the event, the reason he asked for police officers last year was because, you know, unfortunately the week before, they had been a skirmish on Route Nine. But nothing happened and um I don't know if you guys have looked into the, you know, I think we're familiar with this organ- this motorcycle club and it's a a pretty benign organization. I mean, it's some middle aged folks who like to ride motorcycles, so it's and the interest is for a children's hospital. So um I kind of, I feel a little like, I I feel like we should definitely permit the use of Mayor's Park, it's a really good, it's a definitely a worthy cause. I I'm not um I I'm not convinced that we need additional police officers actually, um in light of how well it went last year and the nature of the event. And um and also I'm not, I'm not clear, I'm not clear on why we need ten this year, if we only needed six last year and.
I asked, I didn't get that answer from him, and I I know somebody, other participants in the event are police officers and stuff.
Right, and I remember that came up last year too, and it seems like a pretty, it's sort of like, you know, and you're surrounded by a company that is conscious of the public safety and. Um I I I mean, I I would be totally supportive of not having any additional police officers and relying on the police officer on duty and sheriff and. I mean, last year apparently the sheriff's office was aware of the event and I don't know how consistent the presence was at the sheriff's office, but reportedly the state police were also aware. And again, I don't know how present they were, but they were aware of it and the NTA police were aware of it and so I mean. I I certainly am a huge proponent of public safety, but not to the extent that it makes us feel like uh we're under martial law here and and you can't have a party at the Mayor's Park.
That's how it was last year, after, right after Boston, we had the cycling event and there were there were shot shooters on the buildings, it freaked people out.
Yes, and everybody would pack their meals, yeah. Yes, it did, yeah, it picked us, it told them, it picks it in a different, a different direction and you know, we're cold spring, we're not, we're not.
Yeah. Yeah.
I I think if we do get a commitment from state police, NTA, sheriff's department, that we don't need ten.
Sheriff's department, yeah.
And I think getting back to Ralph's point, if it wasn't a Red Rum, you know, murder event, I mean, it's, Red Rum is murdered backwards, I know what that means, pretty.
The.
Right.
The basically last year, the whole thing last year was was driven by the state and the county of this heightened awareness.
Mm-hmm.
Um and and we were, you know, kind of subject to the, I mean, they really have no idea how big of a deal it really was. I mean, it really, I mean, the the backstory is it was even months they worked on this thing and.
I'm sorry, about the this, about this picnic, this barbecue.
Yes. Yes, through intelligence of each indivi- I mean, they got the names of every person, the attendants, I mean, there are some affiliations with all motorcycle gangs that you must be part of. You know, there's some, it's.
This isn't a motorcycle gang, this is a club, this is a bunch of guys, I mean, I have a motorcycle, so I and I'm.
Any. Right, what what people don't understand is anytime a motorcycle club is formed.
Yeah.
There are um other motorcycle clubs, renegade clubs, that um keep an eye on them.
Uh-huh.
And it's kind of like, I I mean, I guess the best way to to um explain it is like a union, when you're a private company that gets really big, the union wants part of you. It's the same, seriously, it's the same in motorcycle, but what happens is is that in some cases, depending how large you are, um some people actually end up having to um pay off larger uh clubs to be left alone. Say, look, we don't wanna be affiliated with a gang, you know, a renegade club, so you know.
You see, from here.
I think what you're talking about, I actually very uncomfortable about about sort of what you're, are you, are you saying that this this motorcycle club that we are hosting or thinking of hosting?
No, no, no.
Are you saying that they have ties to organize crime because that's what you're saying?
No, that's not, no, no, no.
No, but but there are other clubs, there are other clubs in the immediate area who may see other people here as an encroachment on their turf.
Pinos, no, there there there.
They're Pinos.
There are other clubs in the immediate area who may see other people here as an encroachment on their turf.
Yeah, which it which is exactly what.
Which is a, it's a legitimate work.
It's what happened on on Route Nine, it was.
An encroachment.
Yeah.
One club.
Oh my gosh, dang it.
Thought they were minding their own business and were attacked by another club, now, unfortunately, that didn't happen here, nor are there direct ties to the club. Red Rum does not have these direct ties, the problem is it's open to any motorcycle group, so when you bring in others, if that person has, you don't know if you, that's the day where they come to visit you.
Mm-hmm.
That's.
That was, that was.
Okay, alright, well then, if that is a bona fide concern for this community, wait, just please, just listen to me.
I don't understand.
Then then I, if that's a, if that is a bona fide concern, I I think that we have a different, we have a different issue than just like, oh, hey, how many police officers? I mean, I don't think that the, all of this is coming out of our very limited resources, you know, two thousand dollars is a lot out of our budget and it's not the kind of thing that.
Under. Absolutely.
Um I think that village residents should be having to pay for that.
No, and this is what we've done for every event up to this year, no matter who had the event, if they needed cops, the cops went, we never questioned it. And I think we're at a point where we can't do that anymore for that reason, and unfortunately, this is the 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 scariest one of all, because. You know, the state saw this as an opportunity to keep an eye on people last year, now, I don't know how legitimate it was or if it was just a a chance to keep an eye on people, I I can't answer that, you know, so, you know. I I don't, it's hard to speak for the other levels of law enforcement, I mean, I agree with you, I don't really, I mean, it's kind of unnerving that we're worried about these people that are raising money for good cause. When you talk to state police enforcement, they say, they, these groups constantly use these people to do fundraising for, so you'll let them do it. I can't sell, tell you that there's a connection between Red Rum and, because the those that put on the event had zero ties, they were completely background checked, cleared, free. You know, it's like any party you have, you don't know what your friend is gonna do when they show up. You know, so I, you know, it's really a rock and a hard place for us, because I don't wanna tell George, no, you can't have ten officers, because that's just ridiculous compared to what happened. But if we say to him, you can have as many as you want, but we're not paying for it, now you've took taken two thousand dollars out of the fundraising event for Saint Jude's, which doesn't look good for you either, so. You know, not to create a ball of wax, which we are, but unfortunately, it's here.
Do we have or do we need a policy for people who um have events here that require more police than we wanna pay for?
Going forward, I say yes.
I I think that that's a very good idea and I and I would press uh Officer Kane to explain why he needs four more additional police officers than he needs five.
Absolutely. Well, I believe what happens is is last year with the NTAs, he's not gonna get the outside resources for the same reason you said, it was a so. It was an uneventful event that I they're not, you're not gonna see the resources, so maybe that's that's what he's looking for, I mean, you know, there's there's, um you know, we can, we can, if we want to say, you know, look. We don't think you need that many and we're not going to require anyone else to pay for that many, but if you put them on, it's coming out of your budget. You know, that only hurts him for events later down the road. Uh I I'm I'm not exact, I mean, it's kind of one of these things that I know that I'm not exactly sure the best way, but it's kind of a, you know, this this can of worms that it's can't get the top back on. Um I think we're in agreement that ten officers is 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 a lot, um I don't know that, um you know, any interest of public safety, you know, how, you know, it's okay to tell your officers, not, we don't need you. For you don't need them, because, well, you know, I mean, then what's.
It's not a good age.
What's he gonna say when, you know, you needed ten, and he said, we only have eight, but in, you know, monetarily, we have that right and that's what we're doing, we're looking out for the best interest of everybody. And we're not telling him not to have ten, because, you know, we're telling him his job, the fact is, is this is is it's cost prohibitive to have ten.
I don't think he's reached out to anyone yet, uh state police or sheriff, he may have conversations in transit.
Uh-huh, sure.
And he also said that he, you know, I he never answered with ten, but he he doesn't wanna let his guard down no matter what, everything we talked about, there's a tendency for these incidents to happen at sometimes.
In our defense.
Whether he's ten or not, probably not, but if he doesn't get support from outside, he's uh he feels that way.
Yeah, in in our defense, it was a very successful event last year. You know, zero, I mean, you know, and I a lot of people had, I mean, with them directing traffic, a lot of people had no idea that there was hundred and fifty.
There are hundred and fifty.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of people had no idea, so you know, it it was.
Well, it's pretty local, it was all that commitment park, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, and we asked him to stay off Main Street and they did, you know, um you know, I'm sure that was because the police are directing traffic, but um I I don't think it's um out of the realm of asking him or, you know, saying, look, we don't see ten.
Well, would would you, would you reach out to whoever it is at the state police and whoever it is in sheriff's office who is gonna dedic- who would be dedicating officers and and I and ask them to dedicate some manpower to this project? It's a hefty.
Yeah, I what I can do is I can, I can speak to the sergeant who handled it last year and find out what their level of concern is this year. And then, um you know, we can take, I mean, if their heightened awareness is way down, ours as should ours, then we can, you know.
Well, yeah, I mean, I I think that I think that's reasonable of if and 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 if their concern is up, then they get to fill the gap, I just, I don't think that the. Village taxpayers, the limited number of them could be.
Oh. Right.
So we're gonna wait for that information before we approve this?
Yeah, I I think so.
Uh July twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh.
And when you talk to, is it Mike Halpin you're talking to?
Halpin, yeah.
When you're talking to him about this, if you could, I mean, I think that there's a consensus on the board here that we believe the event is a good one and a worthy cause and we support them having their events. We're a little jammed up about the money that our police officer in charge thinks that should be.
Yes. I agree, and going forward, you know, with the the policy we need to create, and one of the, one of the bone and contencious will be in our, you know, how we um. How we deal with charitable events, because I mean, if someone's having a, you know, a their own party that needs a ton of police officers, they should pay. But if you're, you know, if you're ra- if it's a fundraiser, you know, what what's the limit of saying, well, you know, we're cutting into their fundraising funds by, you know, paying for police, so. I I think that's something that, you know, whether we ask them, you either have to have a smaller event or uh get your own security or or whatever, so I think going forward, this is definitely um a great um segue to creating this policy. So I'll reach out to Sergeant Zabel of of Public County Sheriff's Association. And I'll find out what his.
And the state police.
Yeah, well, I'll go through Zabel all over. The um district attorney, DA, actually played a huge part in this thing last year.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
How come we didn't know about this last year when I was like, keeping things from us, Ralphie?
I guess it wasn't.
Well, I think it was all over the papers, wasn't it?
Not not that it's.
No, not when you started on that.
No, no, not if you could, uh.
Well, not that part of it, but police trepidation of having a motorcycle.
Yeah, right, and and everybody was was, I mean, you know, you can't give enough credit to Mike Halpin and and the, you know, the event itself and, I mean, you know, they were cleaned up, I mean, they were out on time, I mean, there was, they were mild. Uh le- less even, I guess.
What about the caution, what they have to do?
They wanted to go on both sides, including the field, and I think they can rearrange everything so they can put them all on the inside of the container.
I thought, so that's a no?
I don't have any issue, I don't think Greg had any issue if they're talking to Jeff. I think the biggest issue is if you talk about first, police.
Um. And another note, trees, I wanna talk about maybe spreading mulch on the tree roots down there, you're gonna give me quite a trip hazard down the pavilion.
Where? Where, where, what? Oh, uh.
The pavilion, yeah, the willow trees, I'll talk to you guys.
At Mayor's Park? Oh, I don't think mulch is gonna help us there, but I'll um talk to Eddie and I'll follow up with Eddie about tripping hazards at the uh willow trees?
Yeah, um they're pretty big, uh any other old business?
Okay. Yes, they are.
Um new business, uh. Um, new business, um garbage cans. Uh, we are, I mean, we're just getting a ton of garbage on the weekends, and we know that, we see it, um, but it's getting very frustrating for two reasons, number one, it's just really horrible to see garbage. Falling out of our garbage cans on the weekends, um and. Um, I get called on Saturday, Sunday morning, and try to get the highway guys, it just, we need to uh create another policy on either, we're gonna either have to put twice as many cans out. Or mandatory weekend pickups, which again, costs money. Um, and even in, I gotta call this weekend about dock side, you know, I don't know that we we haven't taken up the cans in there, but uh we do really need to. I I mean, I I would think, you know.
I thought that was part of their end of weekend suite now, okay?
Well, I think what happens, I think we're just really, the amount of garbage we're getting, yeah, between their pickup.
Well, we only have two days, right? Mm-hmm.
And I I think, I I mean, I think the our lower Main Street garbage cans are filled up in a day now, where, you know, you were almost getting two days out of it, so, um.
Mm-hmm.
I I I'd like to double the cans and try to cut down on on the overtime, because, you know, we gotta pay them on the weekends, I mean, that county seven thousand dollars doesn't go that far when we're, you know, picking up, and then, and then.
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Why don't we get some more money from the county?
No, we did seventy five hundred.
Well, apparently we need more.
It's a lot.
Did they apply for that this year?
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but, no.
Right, we eat that up.
But.
That's a truck change.
Yeah, that, that's a truck change compared to.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
But I'm questioning, when we do the music series down at Waterfront.
We have to clean out the, to move our hands, yeah.
I bring gloves and do, and that, that's not my point, my point is that the garbage cans at the exit part of the dock are filled, and all the ones in there are empty.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, and all the others are empty.
Right.
So, I think, you know, the, where they are is as important as how many there are.
We should take them away entirely.
Off the dock? If the M T A approves.
No, if we just, uh, I mean, they're not gonna be used down there, and and all the garbage is usually being deposited on exit, or, I mean, quite frankly, there's, there's a lot of.
Yes. I know it's ironic that it's.
Well, or maybe we, well, maybe what we, what we should do is we relocate the em, you know, the ones that are empty just near, you know, and cluster three in in a place.
Who knows?
Uh, it's a, it's a work.
Yeah.
Because I think what what happens is people strangely are attracted to the full ones, I mean, I really think that's happening, because you see these mounds, like on a Sunday evening. And people will be finishing or whatever, and they'll look, and they'll see the heap of trash and they'll go to it.
Yeah.
And then wonder why it fell off the top.
Do you think they will use recycling things, because I mean, there's a lot of glass.
Yeah.
It's, it's a mess.
I don't know, it's.
I I forget one range.
We were down there, right, we were separating the garbage and putting it in bags.
Yeah. It it was awful, I mean, it's also, just last Saturday morning, the garbage cans here on Main Street are overflowing.
Yeah. Before.
Mm-hmm.
Um, about the recycling cans, I was wondering if people weren't inclined to use them because they sort of, they're, you know, they're opaque and. Or use them ex- expressly for recycling, because they're opaque and they look like trash cans, and I'm wondering if if they were those clear screens and people put, you know, they were just empties that people saw, I don't know. There's a some sort of visual cue, like a sign that says, hey.
I'm reading a close up on new cans.
No, there's a button that says, hey, we drink a drink.
Getting back to your original, like the doubling the cans, you mean, put cans next to the existing ones or spread them more or?
Uh, I I can count on us, whatever's gonna solve the garbage can, I think, you know, to your point, double the, double and triple where the probable areas are and move. I mean, the ones that are get, are are half full or less, you know, if there's one close to that, obviously you could, you know, remove one of them and.
I I just think that, like Stephanie said, that encourages more trap, uh the only way you're gonna do it is to empty it, I mean, if you're gonna keep the level of.
Oh, actually, that wasn't my 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 point was that to put the, drag the empty ones over so they're there, I mean, I don't think we're gonna dissuade people from throwing things away, I just think they'll just go in the receptacles, and so.
Yeah.
At the end of the weekend, you'll have eight full ones there, and.
And it's also, I mean, to have. Yeah, to have three garbage pails at the dock, it it's gonna get ugly, I mean, even uglier than it is.
We have to reinvent the wheel, so they're solar powered with co- with compacters, I forget the price of them, they're probably expensive.
Compactor.
Little dudes that empty them.
No, but that was for something, you know, to certain locations, they're always overwhelming, so.
Yeah, Wes, Wes Point has the compactors.
Yeah.
Compact, yeah.
We have a bigger budget than we do.
So we get more money from, from, yeah, we do some of that.
Yeah, I think we should, I should increase the ask to put in a can.
Well, um. About, well, I think that we should definitely do that, um, and the human resources issue, we have Bob Danny who's out on leave now.
Mm-hmm.
So, who do we have working with Eddie, we have Eddie and Charlie.
Yeah, we. Yep, Charles, and um, we hired Chris, Chris Hyde temporary to fill Kenny's, but, and then um.
And.
Chris Hyde.
Yeah, Kenny's, mm-hmm.
Jeffrey Phillips.
Jeffrey Phillips, who was our summer help, he does um garbage, and.
He's like Thursday.
Yeah, he 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 can work two days a week, he does garbage, which is a big day, and then Thursday.
Okay, so they're just the four, and then Joe, Joe is doing maintenance, and.
Mm-hmm, Joe now doing art maintenance.
Okay.
So, um, I'll talk to Ed, um, and find, I mean, look, I I I I'm with you, it'd be nice if they could, you know, pick up. I'd rather them empty the garbage cans than not add garbage cans, I agree with that, but um, I I'll see what.
Can can the ones on the dock be moved, are they attached?
Attached, I think.
No, they can be moved.
The ones on the dock itself?
Yeah, the ones in the screen with those.
On the van stand, maybe.
Uh, van, yeah, yeah, they're.
Vans, uh.
Yeah, they only can be moved, you know.
Yeah, the ones on the dock, they're on little iron legs, do you have like a.
Yeah, they're like. Well, the round ones can be moved, yeah.
Oh, they are.
I know, there's something out there, but.
It's just a frame that the can sits.
My sign that says, go back there.
How much time, I'm just thinking about those guys that work so hard all week.
Yeah.
If they're asked to come in on the weekend, how many hours are they putting in on the weekend?
It's just a two hour thing, I think, just to make it.
Yeah.
Oh, God, no.
But still, it's somebody's weekend, I don't know, it's probably out that it's somebody's weekend.
No, no, I completely agree, I completely agree, I mean, you know, maybe it's.
With the cans.
Yeah, maybe, I don't know.
Could you get one of the guys, there are two of the guys, to like come and leave on on a specific day, two hours early, so they could come, make up those two hours, like Saturday or Sunday.
Yep. Yeah, I think that's fair, I'll talk to Ed about that.
But just, I don't know, I don't know what it would cost at the end, but they could get overtime on there.
I know if you told them they could be two hours early on a Friday, I'm sure they would absolutely love that, and say, you know, and and trade the Friday two hours for a, for a Saturday or, you know, Saturdays.
Rather than overtime?
Um, depend, depend, depends on how I sell it, if I can sell it, um, so I I I'll speak to him and find out.
Like so. Is there any way that recreation could come up with a volunteer or two on the weekends?
He's smiling.
Yeah, look at him.
Yeah, yeah.
It's really a good job, I think.
Up there, it's a nice one.
I was gonna say, the chamber, why can't the chamber work for a while?
It's a, it's one of the most. The chamber too.
With the businesses that, uh, one weekend, it's a business's responsibility to empty a block of of garbage cans, I mean, we have the chamber that. Frankly, I don't know what they do for us, but if that's one thing that they could do, then.
They give us outs?
I apologize. Maybe I shouldn't have said that, 'cause I don't know, like if.
No, you are.
I mean, there is, it is certain areas that are the big problem areas, and it was wrong.
I mean. And it could be, and it could be, it could be shared throughout all of the businesses, it doesn't have to be, you know, if it's a can in front of Catherine's, it doesn't have to be her doing it all the time, you know?
Sure.
I think where you see it the most is outside the Pizza Parlor.
Mm-hmm.
You know, you see it outside to-go food places.
Sure.
Right.
So, um, I mean, I've cleaned the garbage can from here.
But it's not going away, I mean, last week, we had spring break, and the village was packed every day that I was down there, so it's not going away, there has to be some sort of plan.
Well, also.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It's gonna be right there from the air up.
Wait, always a mess down by the river, I mean, Friday or something.
Right, also, if. Further to your, further to your reference to like, you know, maybe the the chamber and local businesses can help out with this, I I I actually, I mean, I don't, personally, I don't envision shop owners going out and like rifling around with trash. But maybe the cha- I don't know how you guys fundraise at the chamber, but if there is money available to pay for service, like services, I don't know.
We, we're not a nonpro- we're not a tax-exempt organization, we can't raise money on a, on a, on an efficient basis to do that. Um, but, and the fact is that, you know, every Sunday, every Sunday we're going down for the music series, we're cleaning up the garbage anyway, for for the pedal of the spring, cleaning the garbage, when they were their rubber gloves on and.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And doing that, I mean, it's, it's not what we signed on to do, I do, um, and in fact, we can't, we can't, the real problem is Karen, Cardi get away.
No, we do.
You know, it's one thing to put a big black garbage bag next to the, next to the empty can, but that's not a try for me there.
Right, right, right.
It's, it's not hauling, it's bad. But I can't.
You know.
And that's, that's a solution, though, like.
I'm, 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 I can drive, drive them to the restaurant to the back where my stuff gets picked up, but I can't do it in the middle of the day, you know?
You know what I mean, it is, I mean, even even if that's a a baby step, well, you know, like the guy got and put it next to it, and then the guy would come and throw it away, I mean, I, I, any, any.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That lessens the overtime.
That lesson, yeah, that lesson's the overtime, it's it's done for them, half of it's done for them already, they're they're actually doing it faster, and I think you.
That lessens the overtime. Yeah, I think a combination of 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 a few extra cans. Um, assigned help, not just saying it will do it, and then, you know, a schedule for our guys.
And then a shameful letter to the county, a shameful letter to the county.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't, I mean, we, it's not, you know, it's the tourists that are coming here, we're not gonna.
What, maybe, what?
Well, we could, yeah, but uh, look, it's unfortunate I come in here, they're gonna be asking.
A shameful letter accompanied by a lot of illustrative photographs, I think, although.
She's like, oh.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's nice to work.
I would be driving a motor truck over there.
They did it for the cycling thing, they did it on the bottom truck.
Yes, I'm getting, getting down on the, down on the truck and drive the truck around, absolutely.
How about the Leos from the.
The Leos, yeah.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, I mean, so it.
Make it a.
Yeah, anybody, everyone, yeah, let's uh.
Community service project, summer community service project.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
It's a great idea.
How often does the P D have the community service sex?
There you go.
Are there prisoners from the camp?
Yeah, they don't, they pick the camp.
They're not gonna bring that on the weekends.
I don't really see the marshal seem better.
No, seriously, they do a lot of work, all over the the camp.
Oh, yeah.
I think they do, it's definitely do a little one, you know, it's more dignified.
It's free, yeah.
Yeah, they do.
They do, they do stuff like that.
Yeah, they do, they do day-long projects, so, you know. Come out for two hours.
And that's for like improved projects.
Because then they'd be paying overtime.
Yeah.
Alright.